Good morning. Welcome to Cinco de Mayo at the Celine County Courthouse. My call to order the May 5, 2020, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. I want everyone to keep in mind that we, even though we are here in the commission room, we will be doing a virtual meeting via the telephone and the local TV station, Channel 20. Public comment will be accepted by dialing 785-621-0800. The entering participant code will be 782-956, followed by the pound sign, and then you will need to dial *9 to alert the moderator that you wish to comment. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I'll ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next point of business is the citizens' input, where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and for items that are not on today's agenda. Are there any citizens who wish to speak?
Mr. Chair, we have no one on the conference bridge. We'll wait just a few seconds to see if anybody comes in from the adjacent room.
Linda says no.
All right, there are no citizens who wish to speak in the citizens' forum, so we'll move on to the action items, or the consent agenda. And the consent calendar is today approval of prior amendments, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any of these items that need to be amended or withdrawn by any of the commissioners? Hearing no objection, we will approve the consent agenda. We will move to the action items, which is item number one, an RFA 159-20 bid award for a marked police SUV with Captain Jim Hughes of the Sheriff's Office. Good morning, Captain.
Good morning, Commissioners. Captain Hughes, Operations Captain with the Sheriff's Office, and I'm before you today to ask for replacement of a Sheriff's Office marked SUV. We're requesting to replace a 2018 Ford SUV patrol vehicle that was totaled insurance due to a crash on February 7 of this year. The alternatives for action is you can purchase the vehicle per the bid that was presented, or you can return the RFA to the Sheriff's Office with further instructions. Sheriff's Office recommendation is to bid, or is to purchase, an SUV from Marshall Motors. They were the sole submitter of the bid, and submitted a bid of $43,999. This bid includes the purchase and installation of equipment that was damaged in the crash, and an installation of equipment that can be repurposed from the crashed vehicle into the new one that's being asked to be replaced. We are recommend, recommendation, or our recommendation is to accept the bid from Marshall Motors in the amount of $43,999. That's to purchase a new 2020 Dodge Durango. The budget impact, Celine County received $27,175.75 from insurance for the totaled vehicle. This amount will be used to replace, or to help finance the replacement vehicle, and the remaining $16,898.25 will be covered from the 2020 EIP fund. The 2020 EIP fund, there was $266,426 budgeted for vehicle replacement. Of that money, the Commissioners have approved $160,158 on prior purchases, and this leaves a remaining balance in the fund of $106,268. The Sheriff's Office anticipates to come before the Commission for two more vehicle replacements soon, and the money remaining in the EIP should cover the two replacement vehicles that we would be asking for.
Are there questions of Captain Hughes from the Commissioners? Hearing none, is there any public comment regarding this RFA request?
Mr. Chair, there is no one on the phone bridge.
All right, through hearing no objection from the public, I would take a motion from the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to replace one marked police SUV to Marshall Motors in the amount of $43,999.
My second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 159-20 bid award for marked police SUV from Marshall Motors. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry four to zero. We will move to, thank you, Captain. We will move to item number two, which is RFA 160-20, Batel Emergency Service Agreement for Decontamination of N95 Respirators, with Michelle Barkley, our Emergency Management Director. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Mrs. Michelle from Emergency Management. I'm here today to ask about the Batel Emergency Service Agreement that will cover Celine County and all of its N95 respirators for decontamination. This Batel was acquired by the state of Kansas through a FEMA resource request, meaning that it's at no cost for the county to participate in. According to the contract, we will have this service for at least six months. It can be extended if needed, depending on the pandemic period. At this point in the response, personal protective equipment is difficult to acquire, meaning you are lucky if you get it by July for what you've ordered. Also, through this system, it can be decontaminated up to 20 times, and in 2015, the FDA did do a test on this using the vapor phase hydrogen peroxide, and there was no effect to the elasticity of the N95 respirators. The county councillor would like it to be noted that the agreement with Batel transfers any risk associated with the use of this decontamination to the individual agency. However, because this mask, these masks are provided to county employees upon their employment, the county is already assuming this risk, so staff believes that the risk is minor and advisable in comparison to the risk of having inadequate supplies of N95 respirators.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, this is for, this service agreement is for decontamination of these respirators, and then be able to reuse them at that point?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
Couple. N95 is kind of a broad gamut of different masks, isn't it? Is this a particular type of respirator, the N95?
Correct. It's the highest grade. It is an N95 because 95% of the particles are, they have N99, but those are more for auto body repairs. These allow for both the individual wearing the mask and those around the individuals to wearing the mask to be protected, versus surgical masks where I put it on and I'm keeping what I have to myself.
Well, this mask here is NIOSH N95.
Correct.
But it's not a respirator mask.
It is.
It is.
Yes, there are, in my order of, that I've gotten from the SNS, I have roughly 12 different models of N95. And there, in the documentation that I gave, there's a list of all the models of N95 respirators that are approved through this.
And where has the county deployed these masks?
I have given them to both the city and the county first responders, transportation, the jail, hospitals, medical providers inside the county, but for the county service agreement, it would just cover fire, EMS, the police department, the sheriff's office, the jail, and the health department.
Thank you.
Further questions from Ms. Barkley?
Nope, that answered everything I was thinking.
All right, is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair, there's no one on the phone bridge.
And there's no one from the outside, so that will take care of that. At this time, I would take a motion for, to be acted upon.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the agreement with Batel as requested by staff.
Commissioner Wees, I second it.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 160-20, Batel Emergency Service Agreement for Decontamination of N95 Respirators. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry four to zero. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks for all your work.
We'll move to item number three, which is RFA 158-20, KDOT Emergency Relief Funds Agreement with Justin Mater, County Engineer. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Kansas Department of Transportation has made funds available for the repair or reconstruction of roads and bridges on federal aid highway systems that suffered serious damage from natural disasters. Celine County has requested reimbursement funds for two projects within the county. The first location is a reinforced concrete box replacement project on Don Meyer Road, south of Old Forty Highway, and the second project location is for road repair on Niles Road, just south of the Celine River Bridge. Both of these facilities received significant damage during the 2019 floods. These projects has been reviewed and approved by KDOT for this funding, so attached is an agreement between KDOT and Celine County, which details the requirements of the program. The county councillor has reviewed the agreement, and it has been approved. And so, as I request that the Celine County Commission approve and sign the copies of the agreement and accept funds totaling $114,269.84. There's, I've got two alternatives for the action. The first one is to sign the agreement and accept the emergency relief funds, and the second one would be, of course, to not sign the agreement and deny the funds. Staff recommends to accept the emergency relief funds. The funds that we will receive will go into the 127 account, which is the Special Highway Improvement Fund.
So the funds have been approved through KDOT.
Yes.
And one of our alternatives for action would be not to sign the agreement and leave $114,269 at, in Topeka. I believe we'll, I'll be in favor of signing this document. So, other comments from Commissioners?
Questions, Justin. The Niles Road project doesn't seem to be that massive of a project. Will both these go out for bids?
These projects are both completed already.
Already done.
Yes, this was, when this whole thing started, especially with the, the box project on Don Meyer Road, KDOT informed us that these projects would not be eligible for funding.
As part of the flood damage?
Yes, yes. And so, we moved forward because we had to get these projects moving forward. Something changed to our favor, and they're, they're already eligible. So, these projects have been constructed and done and approved. Now, the, the road, like you were talking about on Niles Road, yeah, it was just some road repair that our crews were able to, to repair. The minimum, the minimum project that would be eligible is $5,000, and so this has barely met that. The, another requirement for these funds is it has to be on a major collector. Okay, so for FEMA dollars, it cannot be on a major collector route, and so this is kind of, it, it covers the rest of the county road system.
So these have already been paid and funded. This money will just go back into the coffers?
Correct, correct, yeah. So this is, you know, signing this agreement is, is kind of just the final step. Normally, it's the first step that you do, but just how this thing evolved, this was just kind of the final thing that needs to be done, because KDOT has all the documentation that they need, and so everything else is done.
Good work.
Commissioner Vidrickson, so FEMA doesn't approve items that are on a major collector route?
Correct.
And by that, I was thinking that there was another box culvert that was replaced on North Niles Road, and so that would not be eligible for these funds? Is, am I?
There, there's a project on our regular bridge replacement program on North Niles, but that, that structure was not damaged during the floods.
No, I'm talking about the one that was replaced last summer, Darren Fishel. You know which one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
The culvert on North Niles Road, about three miles or four miles from the county line. Was that not eligible for FEMA funds? That was not eligible for FEMA due to the major collector. Due to, okay, and Don Meyer Road is, even though it's paved, and is not a collector, considered a collector road?
It is, it is a major collector. Don Meyer is a major collector. Niles, what you're referring to is a major collector, but I think we looked at that, and it didn't meet the $5,000 minimum funding for that, I believe.
There was, there was a criteria that it did not meet between FEMA and KDOT, but the, the box did. I can't quite remember. I can guarantee it met $5,000, because it was a major project that took several weeks to complete. So, okay, I'm getting, I'm getting off track here. So, any other questions regarding the, the RFA that's before us, from Commissioners?
Can we anticipate any more monies coming in for flood mitigation?
Yes, I'm currently working on, it's a pilot program through FEMA, and this is where the, the channel has eroded out the, right next to the road, the road surface. And so, where there's a project on Cunningham Road, south of Stemel, there's a project on Gypsum Valley Road, just east of Jasper, and there's a project on, nope, what's the one I'm thinking of? Oh, it's a project on Stemel, just east of Jasper, sorry, and there's a project on Gypsum Valley Road, just north of Crawford. So I've got three locations, and FEMA has a new pilot program that they're, they put out there this year, or last year, and it's, it's called Alternative Procedures for Permanent Work Project, Version Three. And it's, it's probably too detailed to probably go into this meeting here, because I can sit here and try to explain it for quite a while, but there's, there could be some, some other significant funds coming our way that I'm working on.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Vidrickson, I'd like to remind meeting participants that we do need to identify ourselves. Because of the virtual meeting, we need to identify ourselves before we speak. Further comments on item number three?
Yes, Commissioner Sparks. One question is, is that, since this has already been done, everything, is there a reason why that that was not written into this deal here, that this has already been done, and we're receiving these funds to put back in the coffin?
My guess is because this is a standard agreement that they, that they use. You know, it did talk about in here that it had to be, you know, according to the D...
But, I mean, and I guess my, my question is, is I?
I don't think that's going to be an issue.
No, no, no. From, from your department, for, for us to verify this, I mean, it's like, it's, it's, I don't, this is great that it's here, but I'd think it'd be to our benefit to know that these bridges have already been built, and this is where we want to apply for these funds, to go back in here to replace the funds that have already been used to do this.
Well, Commissioner Vidrickson, Roger, if I can ask you your question a little bit, I think we have been notified that these projects were completed. It's just that it's been about eight or 10 months ago.
It's been a while.
It's probably one of those things that, you know, flies over our head 10 months later.
It's an oversight. But the other thing here, on your project estimate, is your sheet here of the cost of this, were these estimates that you put in here, the actual cost of those, not the estimate?
Yeah.
This was the cost of the replacements?
Correct, yeah. That's, that's another thing that kind of makes these, you know, this kind of a slam dunk is, is even with KDOT, it's like, everything's done, and they approved everything, and, you know, we don't have to go through this, you know, process of, here's the estimated, you know, here's my estimate, you go through the project, and you gotta start making adjustments for actual costs, and then try to justify those actual costs. Because of how this has worked, everything's done. I handed KDOT, here's the final pay estimate, you know, to the contractor, and they said, okay, looks good, and that's, it just makes it simple.
Commissioner Wees with a question here. I think the confusion came as, when these projects were done, it was explained that they weren't going to meet the criteria, and we needed to get them done. That's why I was a little confused. I didn't know this was the same project. I thought this was something new that was, you were looking to do, not something that had already transpired, and, and that we were receiving the funds for.
Sure, sure, okay.
Because we, at that time, didn't know that was even a possibility.
Thank you.
Correct, right, yeah, and it's, and as I looked in, a lot of the, the biggest issue with, with accepting or trying to go after these emergency funds before was, you know, it was going to be a year and a half long project.
Right.
Going through KDOT, and going, you know, because the plans have to go through KDOT and get that approved, and this was going to be a long drawn out project, and that road was going to be shut down for a long time, and, and, you know, the Commissioners decided, tell, we gotta go ahead and move forward with this.
Right.
Something happened in KDOT, said, okay, they're going to accept these projects now.
That's great.
So, and I've...
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Wees.
All right, is there any public comment regarding this RFA?
Mr. Chair, there's no one on the phone bridge.
All right, there's no one who has raised their hand, or is in attendance to wish to speak to it. At this point, this is Commissioner Vidrickson, by the way, we would, I would ask for a motion.
Commissioner Wees here. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve by signature the emergency relief funds from KDOT as presented by staff.
Commissioner Sparks, I second the motion.
Commissioner Vidrickson, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 158-20 KDOT Emergency Relief Funds Agreement. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Mater. We will move to item number four, which is RFA 157-20, bid award for a mower deck with Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge Administrator. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request for action to purchase one new mower deck that was let out for bid according to County Policy 40-32. Bids were sent to three dealers, and we received two bids. One from Can Equipped Salina, Kansas, for $16,070. Prairie Land Partners of Abilene, Kansas, they submitted a bid of $16,575. We have alternatives for actions, and one is to accept the bid from Can Equipment in the amount of $16,070. Two, accept bid from Prairie Land Partners in the amount of $16,575. Three, it was bid to rebid the equipment, and four, reject all bids. Staff recommends accepting the bid from Can Equipped Salina, Kansas, in the amount of $16,070. The equipment they bid meets all the specifications. It is the same brand, brand and model of our current inventory, which means the spare parts and tires we currently carry are interchangeable. It has been the goal of this department to turn over mowers on a regular basis to improve the resale value of the equipment, instead of spending more money on worn out, outdated equipment. This replaces a 2002 Land Pride mowing deck that will be sold on Purple Wave, and the delivery is expected in June of 2020. The budget impact is our capital outlay line item in the Road and Bridge 011 account has, currently has an unencumbered balance of $27,148, subtracting the purchase price of $16,070. That leaves a balance of $11,078.
Commissioner Vidrickson, thank you, Darren. If memory serves me correctly, this, this mower was also one that was scheduled to be replaced a year ago, that we've put off for a year. Is, is that correct, or am I thinking of something else? No, I don't, I don't recall that. I don't believe so. All right, are there comments from Commissioners, questions?
Commissioner Wees, one question, Darren. What model and make are you running now?
I believe they are Land Pride RCB 2200.
Are those locally manufactured?
Yes, yes. They are made by, by what's Kubota now, that's just Great Plains Manufacturing. Further questions?
The one we're replacing, Mike White, the one we're replacing lasted 18 years, which is amazing.
Yeah.
How many hours do you suppose on that machine?
You know, I could probably say it's probably been rebuilt two or three times.
Oh.
So when you talk about hours on those, and, and the decks, it's probably had the gear boxes replaced several times and rebuilt, but hour-wise, that'd be tough.
It's still a big piece of equipment.
Yeah.
Commissioner Vidrickson, is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair, there's no one on the phone bridge.
And I'm getting the notion that there is no one on the outside that wishes to comment on this also. At this time, we will take a motion, please.
Commissioner Sparks, Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Can Equipped in the amount of $16,070 for one new mower deck as presented by staff.
Commissioner Wees, I second the motion.
Commissioner Vidrickson, it has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 157-20 bid award for a mower deck. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry four to zero. We will move to, that's the end of our action items on today's agenda. We will move into our informational items, and the first will be a Road and Bridge update with Darren Fishel, our Road and Bridge Administrator, and good morning again, Darren.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd, I'd like to start off by, Mr. White asked a question earlier about reimbursement from, from FEMA. There, there is a two-pronged answer to that. We have submitted about $360,000 worth of work complete to FEMA, that we are awaiting repayment for at 85% rate. So, we're, we're still waiting for those dollars, and hopefully, that can happen. Just talking about a little bit of our monthly update, you know, with the, with the COVID virus that we have going around, we chose to remain open and, and do what we have to do as essential personnel. We did stagger the start times for the crews by a half an hour each day. That way, you know, when they go out to work, one crew comes in, and they can be gone before the other one comes in, and that limits our, keeps our capacity for the building below 10. So, there's always people coming and going, and never more than 10 or accumulated gatherings with the social distancing. The motor grader operators, they're mostly by themselves all day, every day anyways, so we didn't see any need to change anything there, other than schedule some shop time. You know, some of the mechanics also are coming in with, with the crews and leaving with them. So, we did also have two snow and ice events in March and April. They were very minor, fortunately. We also completed the rebuild of Wasserman and Frisbee Way. If you remember, a month or so ago, we had some concerned citizens come in over with the conditions of those roads, and it was decided that we would rebuild those. And here are some pictures. This is the intersection of Wasserman and Frisbee Ways. One of their, their comments and concerns was that the water would drain down here off of Frisbee Way and shoot across the road, and you could see that's actually happening. If you look over there on the right side, the ditch is full of just aggregate that's been washed in there. So what we did was we elevated the intersection to match Frisbee Way and installed a culvert there at the intersection. So, I think it was supposed to drain both ways, but now it can go either way. So when it, when it backs up or gets there, instead of going over the road or the intersection, it'll, it'll go down. go down the ditch. One of the issues here was these driveways along Wasserman Way, they're quite higher than the road, so what we did was we cleaned the ditches and shaped these driveways, so the water coming down here can kind of go to the ditch as we cleaned the ditches, and then we elevated the roadway a little bit. This is the curve that goes up there north, and as you can see, one of the issues was that the water would come down here and then go across the road, there's actually a culvert right there, but as you can see, no ditch remains there, so we went in there and we rebuilt that road also. This is all one continuous road, just some of the work we did to create the back slope and the four slope, and something for the volume of water, and we did clean out the culverts also. So this is that intersection looking north, and this was tree lined and tree covered, so we did some tree removal there to keep the, let the sun get to the road, dry it out. This is the intersection of Shipton and Frisbee Ways, one of the issues they had is it was not paved, and this corner right here, whenever there would be a rain, would gully wash out, and there would be a big drop off there. So we paved this, and what this does is this provides just a little bit safer intersection for the motor grader operator, instead of having to blade out to Shipton Road and stick the front of his motor grader out there on Shipton Road, he can just blade up to this little approach back here, and not have to be out in traffic. This is our durapatch operation here, if you've probably heard me talk about it, this is, this is a truck with a properly sized aggregate, this is a tank full of oil, and this is an air compressor, and we pull this in the spring and fall of every year to go and repair roadways before winter and after winter, so little potholes don't become major issues. And we are complete with that for this spring, and I don't know if I can get this to play. But this just shows a pothole, this is a movie, was going to show, but I can't get it to play, of how this whole process works. First, the air compressor blows the loose.
Okay. I'm trying to see if I can get it to play.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Vidrickson, Darren, why don't you go ahead with your presentation?
But this is what they call injection patch filling, the air compressor blows the loose out of the hole, and you put some oil in the bottom of it, and then you turn on the rock, and the rock and the oil come out, and they mix in the patch, and it fills the patch up, and then you put clean white rock on the top of it, and then you just scrape it down and loosen it. And so here, I think it was in January, the Commission approved a dump truck that came in, and it got here last week, and this is the truck that will be used for that operation. One of the issues that we had with the durapatch operation is the, the tank has more oil than rock, so they would have to, they would run out of rock before they'd run out of oil. So when we ordered this truck, we ordered a little bit better, bigger bed, so they didn't have to come back halfway during the day and refill the truck with rock. So this truck will go to being what we call the durapatch truck, and the other truck is also doubles as a salt sand spreader in our snow plow, and it will also pull the mini excavator and bobcat for the rural patrolmen, so we will have a properly sized truck to pull that equipment. We also was awarded a power broom last week by the Commission, that should be here in July or August delivery time, that's going to work out just about right for our striping operation, and chip seal, so hopefully we can get that done. We hauled 16,226 ton of rock, 1,865 ton of AB3, and 6,120 ton of sand, and 26 ton of road salt. We also completed our seasonal tree trimming and tree removal, we'd been working on the, we did meet the budget entry deadlines for the 2021 budget, which will be moving into those things in the coming months, and we started a project in the spring of 2018, and that was to install no passing zone signs throughout the paved roads in the county. Prior to that, there were no no passing zone signs, and so whenever something would get chip sealed, it would not be properly marked until we would come along and stripe it within the next two or three months. So we felt that it, at that time, and it would be a good idea to take any leftover dollars, and we, and buy some signs, and so the Traffic Control Department was working with engineering on this over the years, and they were focused on the ones that we were going to chip seal. So as the chip seal got rotated, these signs went up, and it really has been a good thing, so if it gets chip sealed, there's still a sign that says no passing zone. And we repaired, the Traffic Control Department repaired and replaced 564 traffic control signs. Just a few of the plans that our department has, we still have the upgrade of a half a mile of Hedberg and a mile of Cooley Road to gravel, the prep work for those two roads is already done, we just need to focus some forces down there, and material and trucks to do that. Currently, we are edge wedging State Street from K140 going west to Hedville Road and back, they started that this morning, they did a little bit of work Friday, and then we've also identified Pleasant Hill Road from Hallstead to Burma Road as a road that needs the ditches pulled and rebuilt also, like what you saw on Wasserman and Frisbee Way. The aggregate haul, we have on the books 10,019 ton of rock to haul, 2,436 ton of sand, and 681 ton of AB3. Budget wise, we're in really good shape, we've used 32% of our maintenance budgets, which is in line with where we at with the year, when you divide the months by 12, and then times by how many months we've gone, we're right at that 30% mark, and that is 21% of our overall budget, and I imagine that'll get higher once the asphalt contractors start working, and we start using the money out of those line items, but it looks to be in pretty good shape right where we're at.
Commissioner Vidrickson, thank you, Darren, I want to say that Wasserman Way was looking at that, and I have been out and looked at that, I'm not going to say inspected, because I'm not a qualified inspector, but it is, it's quite impressive from point A to point B, from where you started to where it is completed now, and I know the residents are pretty happy with that project, and it's pretty impressive. So at this point, are there any other questions from Commissioners for Darren?
Commissioner Wees, I have a couple of questions, Darren. Do you, did you have a dollars spent on the Wasserman Way improvements, do you know what that project cost?
I do not have that with me, we weren't quite complete on some of the work, but I can sure get that and email it to you.
It'd be interesting to know. Also, the paving you did at Wasserman Way and Shipton, that is just an approach you put on there?
Yes.
Did you do that in-house then?
Yes.
Okay. So you still have some paving equipment?
We blade laid it.
Okay, I don't know what that means, but.
You know, we used a motor grader, and so those little short stretches, we still have the ability to do, because of the small roller that you folks approved last year, and the water tank, so we have, we have the ability to do those things.
Okay, and I saw, I saw crews getting into your concrete stash there on State Street, that's the edge wedging projects that are going on?
Yes.
And they'll just work off of that pile and?
There is a pile in the back also, there's two piles there, just so you know.
Oh, I thought you just had the front one.
No, there's one in the back also.
Okay, super. And one last thing, you were talking about no passing lanes, and I've noticed that Waterwell driving west from the interstate, the intersection just past Centennial, where FedEx is, it's not double striped there, is there a reason for that? I think, I think it's probably GPS, they added that road, and I don't know if the GPS ever said we ought to no pass that, or maybe it shouldn't be, but every other intersection going down Waterwell is.
I can sure talk to Justin about that, we can, we can do some measuring on that and look and see if it meets the criteria.
Thanks, and to echo Commissioner Vidrickson's, that Wasserman Way project looked like quite an improvement, I hope, I hope it met the needs of the homeowners there.
I think it will, you know, just throwing a few spitball things out there, we did purchase some rock last year from a place called Melvern, and one, it was a thousand ton, and he advertised it as less dust, and yada, 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 and so we're going to see if it works up there with those homes, and we did sand the top of that to try and keep the dust down, so we've got just a little bit of things up there that we're looking at, to see how long they last, how they wear, and see if it does make an improvement for folks.
All right, Mr. Vidrickson, thank you, Darren, for the update, we appreciate it very much. We'll move to item number two on the informational items, and that brings us to the County Administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes, Celine County Administrator. Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Just a few things that I wanted to update the Commission on this morning. First, talk briefly about our coronavirus emergency measures. Health Officer Darren, Jason Tiller had another meeting this morning at 9:30, but he will plan on being at the Commission meeting next Tuesday, and giving us, giving you all a review of how this first week of post-stay-at-home has gone. As you know, and hopefully members of the public know, Darren, why do I keep calling him Darren? Jason chose not to implement any additional measures beyond the Governor's order at this time, and I want to emphasize the at this time, because he is continuing to monitor the situation, and will be meeting with a group of community leaders on Thursday evening of this week to discuss. Your Commission could, of course, also consider additional measures or direction to the health officers, so. As regards the county buildings, each of our county buildings is in a bit of a different place, we have everything from the senior center that continues to be fully closed, community corrections is sort of ramping up slowly, the Expo Center is still continuing with contactless delivery, I guess you would say, for chemicals, and then the city-county building is more or less open, but with some limited entrance procedures, and also a couple of offices continue to remain locked down. So the best advice I would give to citizens at this point is if you need to transact business in person with the county, check our website, or call the office before you make a trip and find out whether they're open or not. I also wanted to update the Commission regarding the county budget process for 2021. As Darren Fischel just mentioned, we did have a deadline for departments, so I've handed out to the Commissioners today what was submitted by the departments to this point. I will note that it does not include a transfer to our capital improvement program, so if you look at the total of the general fund and see that it goes down a little bit, that's why, there was a million dollars in the 2020 budget that's not there yet in 2021, we certainly anticipate making some sort of a transfer, so that will go up a little bit. You will be hearing from the allocation agencies on the next three Tuesdays, and then we will hold a special meeting to hear from departments on May 27. We're hoping that will provide us time to be into Phase Two of the reopening plan, and allow for a few more people to be gathered together. A couple of other things briefly, we did last night, very late, receive a draft of a lease for the Expo Center from the City of Salina, I have forwarded it to the County Council for his review, and we will be presenting that to your Commission hopefully next Tuesday. And also, a spot of additional good news, last night, the sheriff received a phone call from Senator Moran, and I got an email from staff for Congressman Marshall, and we received notice that the sheriff's application for coronavirus emergency supplemental funding was approved, so we should have $58,000 coming our way for law enforcement, so. Those are my updates for today, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Commissioner Vidrickson, thank you, Phil. We'll move to item number three, which is Commissioners' comments, and I'll just elaborate just shortly on what Phil mentioned from the Health Department. It is not the intention of the Celine County Commission to go over and above what the Governor's plans are, the reinstatement of Kansas business, opening the state back up, we will follow the guidelines that have been handed down from the state, and we're not going to put any further additional restrictions on those comments. I will say that I have attended several phone call meetings lately with the Governor, been part of that, I have also been part of the KAC, which is the Kansas Association of Counties, and their phone conferences with the Governor on a much smaller group basis, so Celine County is represented and privileged to some of the information that goes out via the Governor's office, you know, when you're on a conference call with the Governor and there's only five or six people on that, why, you can get much more to the subject matter than just listening to a phone call, so. Are there any other comments from Commissioners? Are there any announcements?
This is Commissioner White, I have a county clerk question, if I may. Jamie, a couple of months ago, we had an application for road vacation, West Schilling Road, and could you bring us up to speed on the status of that now?
The applicant, Joel Weimer, we reached out to him, and he had suggested to wait on that, because he thinks that not everybody in that area is for it, so he was going to kind of wait and see, so it's kind of on permanent hold, I think.
Forthcoming, in other words.
Yes, yes, so we have it, we have it in a file, but, and he'll contact us if he wants to move forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vidrickson, all right, thank you, any other announcements or questions from Commissioners, anyone else? If not, I would take a motion for adjournment.
Commissioner Sparks, make the motion.
Commissioner Wees, I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the adjournment for today's meeting, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you for watching.